Thank you very much, and good evening for our last one in this electoral cycle. So it's a significant occasion for that particular reason and for no other. To open proceedings tonight, I'd like to invite Reverend Kim Beals from St Mark's Anglican Church in Bellreath to open with a prayer.
Wonderful. Well, I thought we would almost be apt to ask you, what would you like prayer for today? I imagine, yes, peace, very well, that sounds good. Well, let's pray together. Thank you that we can have this gift of life, and that we can put our hearts and minds into serving others and for the good of others. We pray that in the thick of elections and in the thick of things, that each of us might have peace, and that we might have a secure identity as we seek to serve others in our leadership roles, to strengthen everyone here tonight, and may this be an encouraging and good meeting together. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before proceeding, I would like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal Commission as the original custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to all those past and present. I'd also like to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually, and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. Clear the meeting open, and we have an apology from Alderman Cusick, who's on through leave. Item two, confirmation of minutes of 1st of October, as circulated, be taken as written confirmed, Alderman Campbell, Second of Alderman Chong, all those in favour, carried unanimously. Minutes communication. As I mentioned earlier, tonight's the last one of the electoral cycle, two of our members are not standing again for reelection, and on the basis of that, I'd like to, on behalf of council, present certificates of achievement for each of them. The first is to Alderman Doc Campbell, in recognition of your outstanding contribution and commitment to the City of Paris during your service as Alderman from 1974 to 1983, Vice-Councillor, 1993 to 2018, including time as Deputy Warden, Deputy Mayor, and then Mayor from 2005 to 2011. Doc, thank you very much for making this a statement.
Thank you.
And Alderman Durs, if you could come forward, please. Also to Steenstone Council from 1998 to 2007, and then again from 2011 to 2018, being a very active Alderman, particularly in regard to heritage and other issues, and Doc, on behalf of the City of Paris, thank you very much for your service and service. Thank you. Thank you. Item four, council notes the workshop, notes the agenda briefing as a workshop on the Friday, the 19th. Thank you, Alderman Beals, Second of Alderman Chong, all those in favour, carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close to associate. There are none. Item six, tabling of petitions, there's none on the agenda, but are there any from the floor? Thank you. Public question time, there's no public questions on notice or answers to questions on notice, but there is an answer to a previous question on notice, General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, there is a response in the, to the question printed in the agenda paper. I would however like to perhaps offer some slightly different comment, and these comments will be included in the, in the answer to the question in the minutes. So in addition to the information printed there, I would advise, or I am advised, that the pump station at the rear of 490 South Arm Road, Lordordale, is operational and switches on and off depending on water levels in the channel. In relation to the Urban Drainage Act, council has an obligation to prepare drainage plans for each of our main catchments. It is expected that the catchment management plan for Lordordale will be commenced before the end of the calendar year. And that's, those comments are in addition to the ones printed in the agenda, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice?
Sorry, there is a second question, I think, Mr Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
And I don't actually have any additional comments other than the, the comments printed in the, the answer printed in the agenda there, other than to add, council always seeks to comply with all of its legislative obligations, not just in relation to the National Parks and Reserves Management Act, but at all times endeavour to respond with our, comply with our legislative requirements, otherwise the answer is as printed in the agenda, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. So moving on to questions without notice, item seven point four, are there any questions from the public without notice? Could I ask you please to identify yourself and address for the pub? Mr Figg, if you could do it for the record, for the audio visual system as well, please.
Okay, I don't know if this is on or not, and if the recording hasn't heard the chairman already, my name is Michael Figg, and I live at Lordordale. The question without notice is to the General Manager, through you, Mr Chairman. I've noticed over a period in the officers' reports, when there's a public consultation, as listed in the agenda tonight, there are comments and reactions to those submissions from the public. I've noticed that some major omissions are made in what the officers have responded to. Can you tell me why that is, and also, do the Aldermen see all of the applications and presentations put in by the public?
Through you, Mr Mayor. If we don't include material in the consultation, it's certainly accidental, I'm not aware of circumstances where that is indeed the case, however. I am aware on at least one occasion, we did, but I'm going back a number of years now, we did not include something because of the defamatory nature of the comments. But leaving that aside, we always endeavour to ensure that the report reflects accurately. In relation to the Aldermen seeing each, each of the documents, certainly in some instances we don't circulate directly to the Aldermen all of the comments, given the voluminous nature of some of the feedback, but advice is provided to the Aldermen that the documentation is available for inspection should they so wish.
Thank you for that answer. There's, we had a public meeting in Lordordale, which you were there, and you were there, Mr Mayor, and a number of issues to do with an item that's on the agenda tonight were brought up, and in a submission that I put in, there was quite a serious one about the weight of a vehicle in relation to the construction of a ramp. And I would have thought that that was serious enough, non-defamatory, and it should have been included in the report. Could you please let me know why that wasn't?
I'm not aware of the actual submission myself, and I'd have to take that unnoticed, and I'll provide you with an answer in due course.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public?
Tony Mulder, from Howra, Mr Mayor, and my question is to you. In light of the current inquest into the death of a Margate motorist due to a fallen eucalypt tree branch, is council reviewing its policy on protecting large eucalypts in backyards and near roads and footpaths?
Thank you, Mr Mulder. The basic answer to that question is, no, we're not reviewing, we're waiting to see what coroner's findings are before any further action is considered. The policy that we have in place has actually been pretty well-founded for a number of years. Thank you, Mr Mulder.
Well, in light of that, Mr Mayor, I do take credit for the existing policy, but it seems it's in need of review.
Item eight, deputations from members of the public, General Manager.
They're on, on the surveying, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. No motions on notice. Reports from outside bodies, Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, the September quarterly report is still pending, copying refused disposal site to an authority, Alderman Campbell.
Yes, Mr Mayor, the annual meeting of the copying authority will be held on Monday afternoon.
Thank you. In regard to Tas Water, I'd like to table the annual report, which has just been camera barred. Item ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, first of all, we've got the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, Alderman James.
The item's been listed in the, in the agenda, page 11. I would like to make a comment in relation to two aspects on page 12, the Waenaar Reserve Track in Mindersbahn, absolutely brilliant, it was done, constructed by the fire crew as part of our outdoor works crew, and it's been basically constructed out of the rocks and sandstone that is actually on-site, and it's really worth a visit, because it blends beautifully with the environment and the nature of the land in question, and it's well worth the actual walk when it's during. On page 13, the Ralphs Bay Coastal Track, it says, "An application for a permit to conceal Aboriginal middens has been submitted, and work cannot commence." I can advise the council, the permit has been issued, and therefore we will be starting to do the layout of that track. There is a gulch or some area there which may need to be, and I'm sure Alderman Farland would be well aware of that in relation to this, but other than that, there will be a bench at the turning area where people can actually proceed along the Ralphs Bay coastal foreshore and enjoy that beautiful walk, and that will be basically in place by the end of the year. I see council support.
I take it that you're moving at the chairperson's report being received? Can we have a second of for that, please? Thank you, Alderman Chong. Any questions? Discussion? Those in favour? Carried unanimously. Natural Resource Management Committee, thank you, Alderman Farland.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I highly recommend this report.
Do we have a second of, please? Alderman James, thank you.
I would seek council's attention to page 15, which is looking at a draft Kromorn Coastal Reserve Activity Plan for coming up. This report has followed the Tracks and Trails example of including pictures, so people get an on-the-ground aspect to the project development. The next one was, from my personal point of view, on page 17 was the Ataka Bay Lagoon, where there has been a lot of problems with pollution and weed management there for a long time. So it was very pleasing to hear that the lagoon is in good condition at present, and the Lancier Group there should be applauded for their work. And again, on page 18 was the Lordordale Tipsite, which is under gone weed control. I have made some efforts to try and find out why the trucks going from Lordordale down to South Arm and back are not washing down when they're doing development works for the, for the legislative control of tussock grass, which has ended up being a saga for me trying to talk with the state government. The Lancier Program's applications for the second round of grants close on the 22nd of October, and with governance, the committee will be lodging minutes tonight, which I hope Aldermen will read in the context of looking at the strategic vision for the NRM Committee. Thank you.
Any questions, discussion on the report? All those in favour that have been received, carried unanimously. And Bicycle Steering Committee, Alderman Bonberto.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that report.
Do we have a second of, please? Alderman Beals, thank you, speakers. Okay, so we'll put the motion, all those in favour, carried unanimously. Are there any other reports? Alderman here.
Mayor, I have the Business Assembly Board of Mayor's meeting minutes.
I have the minutes for the Disability Access Advisory Committee. The minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee.
Other, Alderman McFarlane.
The minutes of last meeting of the NRM Committee, and I'd like Alderman to take note that we are looking at a review of the Bushland Coastal Strategy, which like with all other groups, is a strategic need for review after a period of time, and with the big change in climate and council strategic vision, we need to review that strategy to keep up to date.
I have the minutes of the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Stand up there.
No, it's all right.
Okay. Okay, there being no other reports, we're moving on to 11.1, that the information in the weekly briefing reports of the 1st, 8th and 15th of October be noted. Thank you, Alderman Chong, Second of Alderman Thirley. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I refer council to the weekly briefing report of the 15th of October, and to the appeal against council's decision at 15 Derwent Street in Bellreath. My question through you to the General Manager, in that notice to the Aldermen, Mr Paul, it refers to amongst other things, a copy of what is deemed to be the matters that were discussed at mediation. Are you in a position to advise that the decision that council made in relation to this matter in, I think it was August, September, that all of those issues will be intact, will go to the mediation and probably to the appeal process? Or has there been any changes to those items as listed on, on the page 59, that show some change or some items that may be mediated at the, at the next round of mediation hearings?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Mr Lovell, add or correct me if I get this wrong, but essentially the mediation process is, is an opportunity for both parties to explore whether there is any common ground in relation to the matters of contention as proposed by the applicant. Clearly, the list that's been circulated to Aldermen covers pretty much all aspects of the, of the permit sought. I would, I would be very confident that council officers won't be agreeing to anything at mediation without that recommendation coming back to council in one way, shape or form. It may be in fact that there is nothing agreed at mediation, and that the matter goes to a full hearing before the tribunal. That's still to unfold, as I understand it, through the, through the ongoing mediation process. I think the matter's set down for hearing sometime in February, is that correct? Yes. So between now and then, there'll probably be a little to-ing and fro-ing in terms of mediation, but nothing will be agreed to without it coming back before council.
Yeah, to supplement, Mr Mayor, I would ask the General Manager to advise the council that the, the actual one to seven, as listed on page 58, is a direct result of council's decision of the meeting that occurred when that recommendation was put and to refuse the application, and I would like assurances from the GM that items one, two, three, four, five, six and seven are in fact the actual decision of the council in relation to 15 Derwent Street.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I don't know if that's, Mr Lovell is, is the entirety of the decision, but certainly, that council decision in its entirety has been conveyed to the commission, and that's the decision we'll be seeking to prosecute, if I can use that term, through the mediation and through the hearing process.
Any other questions? Alderman Walker.
Yes, same briefing paper of the 15th, page 67 is related to 21 Harmony Lane, South Arm, and it's in relation to directives from the Resource Management and Planning Appeal Tribunal. Now, in that decision includes, including a condition restricting hours of operation of the skate park by defined times or reference to daylight hours. So should it be ending up reference to daylight hours, that would mean on the longest day of the year, something around 9.30 or so at night? Would it...
Perhaps if I can ask Mr Lovell, Mr Mayor, I haven't been party to that one.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Can I suggest that before the council gets into a discussion about if the tribunal, how those hours are selected, there's actually a question, there are legal questions about the validity of the conditions that have been proposed by the tribunal, that's been put to the tribunal, and it may be that those conditions in any form aren't part of the tribunal, so it's a bit premature.
Any other questions on that? Weekly briefing report, in that case we'll put the motion that the info in them be noted, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Nothing at item 11.2, so I can advise that council now intends to sit as a planning authority under Looper, the first item. I'd like Mr Lovell to join us. First item is 11.3.1, an amendment to the, a section 43a amendment, and a 30-lot subdivision at 22 Atkins Street, Brokeby. Alderman Campbell, Second of Alderman Farland. Wish to speak to it? Alderman Farland.
This application received support from council. In the meantime, as for my personal interest in public open space of this area, where there is a very deep gully that's often used for the dumping of vehicles and rubbish, I'm pleased to see that the conditions adequately will cover the incorporation of public open space and weed management, hopefully to the benefit of linking the top skyline trail to the urban environment.
I need for a right of reply, so I'll put the motion which resolves to certify a draft amendment and approve the subdivision subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Sorry, I missed that, I apologise. I'll put the motion again, all those in favour? Against? 11.3.2 is a development application, 89A South Arm, a South Terrace and 11 North Terrace, Lordordale for boat ramp and demolition of existing timber pedestrian access ramp and car park development. Do we have a second of, please?
There is a slight adjustment to the, to the motion. I did circulate over the weekend.
And Alderman Beals has seconded that.
Mr Mayor, this is regarding the boat ramp and demolition of the existing timber pedestrian access and the car park development. Mr Mayor, I would like to make an apology, and it's my apology, it's not on behalf of anybody else around the table, it's on the basis that I think this process had its problems. And by the very nature of having this matter now before the council, is in my view, one way to resolve the sort of impasse that developed in relation to when we decided to close the beachhead at the head of the canal, and then proceed to basically have the populists or the boat users etc. rally together and ask the question, why did this happen? The point I am trying to make here is that the process was wrong. We should have...
I think it's really, point of order, please, Alderman James, it's really important to stick to as a planning issue.
It is.
Without going further afield.
I know that, Mr Mayor, and I will conclude with another comment in a moment. That's, what I'm trying to say here is that there wasn't the due process that should have happened prior to this particular beach access being closed at the Lordordale Canal. If there had have been a discussion in relation to Crown and council land prior to it being closed, then I think we wouldn't have been in this situation today, and therefore we've having had to go back over this situation and now open it up again to the public. In the motion that's before you, there were a number of representations that were included within the officer's report, and I sought, and I'm seeking council obviously in its consideration of this particular motion, to include those comments as, as far as insulation of bollards and also the installation of sign poles etc. These comments were part of, were representations that were made by the public, and I'm hoping that by the very nature of this particular recommendation getting up tonight, that it won't stall the process, and I'm hopeful of this, that there will not be any appeals which could drag this whole thing out and not have the beachhead opened up before Christmas. This is really the most important thing that we need to do, and that is to have this canal opening built, well, the construction of it, and also the access for the public and boat, boat users before Christmas 2018. The motion is quite lengthy, but as I've said, what's in the agenda, what has been printed in the agenda, and the four representations, I'm hopeful that those comments in relation to the installation of bollards, council will need the pedestrian measures and controls following the audit, council officers intend to reuse the pedestrian ramp and consider how best to utilise the redundant materials etc. Now, that, what, these matters were raised by members of the public, and I understand they were part and parcel of the representations. So if we are able to open up the beachhead by Christmas 2018, then I think that we have been able to achieve something out of the record, because at the end of the day, we've been really canvassed by this matter, and also to the fact that it's, it's been one of these issues that I think goes to the crux of the point, and that is, how do we consult with the public in relation to council and Crown land? That is very important, and I think we need to be on the front foot rather than the back foot when it comes to handling issues such as this. In conclusion, I would like to make the comment, and I disagree with the mayor heartily in relation to his comments in the paper, when he made comments that there had been extensive consultation in relation to each of the matters raised, and he'd made comment in relation to Kangaroo Bay and the Lordordale Beach access. That is not so, Mr Mayor, and it's not quite right to say that, but in the superstances, I need to accept some responsibility for this, and I seek council support.
Thank you. Second of all, Alderman Beals.
Thank you, Mayor. Door knocking in Lordordale like everybody else has, everybody wants to see this boat being opened, but let's be honest, one of the reasons why we acted so quickly is the advice we got, that because of, the dune was so low, that a lot of houses could be flooded in that area. Look, when I was down there the other day, I was quite surprised just how high the tide was. Now, this boat ramp is going to be great, we understand that, I totally agree with all these conditions, I think it's quite a good motion, and I'm a bit like Alderman James, let's get on with it, people want the boat ramp there. Now, you could go, you could go on with every issue that's involved with this, and some people think we shouldn't even be involved in the Crown land aspect of this, but I think we took the boat ramp away. I think the boat ramp that's coming back is much better, and I mean much better in my opinion. And look, I haven't had a complaint about the design we've got, I think people just want it there so they can use it. So I certainly support this recommendation, and I hope everybody else will.
Other speakers. Alderman Thirley.
I too was present at the public meeting and was quite overwhelmed by the angst in the room, and I think perhaps if that angst had been known, we would... in the room, and I think perhaps if that angst had been known, we wouldn't be in this position. But the reality was, as Alderman Pearce has said, it was removed based on coastal inundation and on the advice of experts in that area. The representations that are evident in this report are probably the very reasons and some of the reasons why it was removed in the first place. So, we can't discount, there are other people in the community that actually don't necessarily support this going back in this particular location. From my point of view, as chairman of the Access and Disabilities Committee, I can only hope that the audit of its use will actually come up with a recommendation to instate some disability access, because the current one that is going to be removed did not fit the bill, and this is another area that that has required rectification. Thank you.
Right of reply, Alderman James?
Brief, Mr Mayor, I think we need to move forward, and I think this is the way to do it. I would like some assurances from the staff, from the engineering area, that in fact the work will commence immediately, and obviously is subject to appeals, but I'm hoping that that may be not the case, particularly if we've included those representations within the motions before the chair. The other thing is, I'm hoping that Mr Graham can assure us that, subject to the appeal process, and that this can, this particular opening of the beachhead at the head of Lord of Dale Canal can be addressed and opened by Christmas two thousand eighteen. And I would like to have some assurances within the next weekly briefing report as to whether or not a timeline can be established, Mr Mayor, for have that work to be done and completed by Christmas two thousand eighteen. I seek council support.
So, the recommendation is for approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Eleven point three point three, development application at seventeen Anchorage Court, Tranmere, for Agede.
Mr Mayor, before anyone moves anything in relation to this, we have circulated a letter from the applicant requesting that due to the revised information provided by the Department of Primary Industries, Parks, Water and Environment, and the imminent commencement of the council master plan for Druddy Point, we would like to withdraw the above application. In accordance with council policy, once it's listed on the council agenda, that is ultimately a matter for council to determine whether they wish to hear the matter or proceed with the matter or to agree to the applicant's request to have it withdrawn. So that needs to be the subject of consideration, Mr Mayor. The second part of their letter requests the withdrawal fee and the unused portion of the application fee be refunded. Again, that's a matter for council, should they so wish to determine, I would say that the fees that they've been charged are strictly in accordance with council's policy to date.
I might take those two items separately, so it'll be a procedural motion that that we agree to the item being taken off the agenda. I think Alderman Farland's moved that, Alderman Chong has seconded it. Being procedural, there's no debate, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now, the matter of costs. Is anyone prepared to move that council's policy be waived?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Sorry?
I'm happy to have that waived.
Eddie, do we have a second to that? Second to Alderman Pearce, right. Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Look, I don't believe that the matter of costs is a procedural motion, and that's why I've taken a move and I'll be invited to debate. Yeah, and Alderman McFarlane has declined to say, so now I'm going to call on the second to Alderman Pearce.
The only reason I said this because it said, and the unused portion of the application fee be refunded, so it's only the unused portion.
But there's also the withdrawal fee, it's not quite that simple. Alderman Chong?
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I just confirm, it is actually the waiver of the fee for withdrawal as well as whatever unused portion there would be, if there was a...
Through Alderman Chong, I'm just reading directly from the letter, and it says, we also would like to request that the withdrawal fee, which is the fee they paid to have it withdrawn from the agenda, and and the unused portion of the application fee be refunded. I have to say that I would be pretty confident that the unused portion of the application fee is in fact zero, but I would have to check on that at some stage, but so in effect, we're probably only talking about the fee charged for the withdrawal fee.
I guess as a matter of principle, I wouldn't support refunding the fee, it's a standard fee that we charge. We don't normally waive that, we haven't waived it for other people when they've withdrawn them from the agenda, I don't see any particular compelling evidence to do so now.
And then Alderman James?
I actually was going to ask what the amount of that fee is.
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
And the only reason I wouldn't support the return of that fee is because the revised, there's revised information, which perhaps could have been forthcoming in the first place, so I don't think that's any fault of council that this additional information has been provided, which which in effect has perhaps could have been provided before the application went in. So, I don't like precedent said, I don't like establishing reasons, we all have to abide by fees that we don't like.
This is an awkward one, and again, the previous speakers, I think have summed it up quite well. The question of the timing of this, I think is really important, because up until Friday lunchtime, Saturday, Sunday, was a live application, and then on Monday morning, I had a call from a person associated with this about the nature of perhaps withdrawing this, and I thought that at the last minute to withdraw it really detracts from what I thought is an appropriate way of dealing with it. Okay, three fifty may not be a lot of money, but there is a principle here, Mr Mayor, and that is that there is a timing aspect of it, as I said, prior to the actual it becoming listed on the agenda. Now, if through some fault or other that the consultant didn't communicate with the developer or vicky versa, then again, it's it's something that perhaps is unfortunate. But at the end of the day, once it's on the agenda, and it has to be a really good reason, in my view, for us to consider withdrawing or refunding the fee, and in this particular case, it doesn't spell out anything that, in my view, determines as to what is the reason for this. I do know there are some matters there that relate to spotted hand fish, and I think that needs to be said, because it's well written in the agenda in relation to that. But at the end of the day, we're short on content, and the reasoning for this isn't clear, and I wouldn't support, in this particular case, us to obviously withdraw the fee and and obviously make that account refundable to the applicant.
As far as I'm concerned, the situation that's led to the withdrawal of the application, which is that it's been, the application's been recommended for refusal, and I stress recommended, we council could have potentially made another decision, I don't know necessarily whether they would, and we won't know because, you know, because that's it's been withdrawn. However, the situation that led to it was that the, in terms of the spotted hand fish issue, the applicant did have an opportunity to demonstrate that there wouldn't be impacts, you know, contrary to the the most recent survey, and they chose they chose not to study it, they chose not to put that information forward. So, it's actually the applicant that have, that's, you know, their actions that have created the circumstances that led to that recommendation of refusal. Now, if there had been a study, who knows what it would might have found, and I, but we need to, you know, they haven't really put any reasons forward for the waiver, and I would only be comfortable agreeing to a waiver if it was something that was completely, you know, out of the applicant's control, whereas this is something that I believe was within their control. I would be very worried about the precedent would set if we did agree to the waiver.
Yes, look, I concur with most of the points around the table, and again, we can't specify here whether it's the applicant or the people working on behalf of the applicant that have led to this situation. If we're going to look at waiving fees, we should sit down and start again with the credit card surcharges that this council unjustly places on people and it not being the most expensive collection of money. For consistency and fairness, that is where we should be prioritising looking at fees being waived.
Okay. Any more election campaign? In that case, right of reply, I think it's Alderman Farland.
Well, Mr Mayor, I'm sure that the applicant received a copy of the letter from the Department of Peewee to the council, absolutely positive of that. And in relation to agreeing to the comments in this letter, which request the withdrawal, not the wavering, of the fee from the unused portion of the application fee to be refunded. Now, I don't have a problem with that, however, if other Aldermen around the table wish to address it as wavering, I'm quite happy to accept that interpretation, and I will support what I put forward, because I think that if there was an unused portion, then it was simply a deduction from that for the withdrawal fee, which I don't have a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is that we waive the withdrawal fee and refund unused portions.
From the refund.
All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Moving on to eleven point three point four, is a development application at nine Gunning Street, Richmond, withdrawing operations and additions. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second up, Alderman McFarlane. Thank you.
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, it's a sensitive development which has managed to garner both our heritage adviser and heritage Tasmania's support, and I think council should support them.
Second up?
Looks good.
Thank you. Other speakers? Put the motion, all those in favour? Okay, unanimously. Eleven point three point five is a development application at nine River Street, Bellreev, for two multiple dwellings. Alderman Campbell? Second up, Alderman McFarlane. Speakers? Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to it? Other speakers? Alderman James?
I had a lengthy discussion today with Mr Lovell in relation to this, and I know the general manager and I have locked, not locked, that's the wrong word, but have in fact discussed this very matter in relation to the residential controls that relate to as part of the current interim planning scheme and of course the statewide planning scheme. In this particular case, and I know that you were about to say, is it relevant to this, and it is, so I preempted you, Mr Mayor, in the last...
It wasn't, Alderman James. I could see you're on target.
You're on target, that's very good, Mr Mayor, that's very good. But look, if you go through and look at each of these headings, that that is attached in the officer's report, on page one forty-seven, private open space, it has a minimum horizontal dimension of four, four metres or two, does not comply, the private open space would have a minimum dimension of X number of metres, it does not comply with laws. Now, we are trying to address ourselves the performance criteria and using the acceptable solutions as sort of a base starting point, that's that's how it works. But if you go through each of these items, they have been ticked off in regard to open space, privacy, does not comply, the proposal includes a kitchen and two living windows with elevator floor levels on the western elevation, it does not apply, does not imply. And then we go to a hundred and fifty-two, privacy, and so on. Now, what I'm trying to establish here is that it's very, very difficult to be able to say to the planners, where is this component of amenity where a person can enjoy the living space, can enjoy their own space within their own home, and then not be sort of dwarfed by buildings that are in close proximity to it? And in each of these cases, under the acceptable solutions, it does not comply, but then when it's applying to the performance criteria, and that's where obviously the the planners have to have to have to go to look at as to whether or not discretion ought to be exercised, it's very easy in my, from my perspective, to say that there is a lot of wriggle room here, and there's a lot of subjectivity as distinct from objectivity within the planning scheme, and therefore we can, and I believe appropriately, can decide as to whether or not a particular proposal should or should not be approved. Now, Mr Lovell has said that it's very, very difficult, and I know that the the view of the planning people, the planning department of council, are of the view that the system is out of balance. I think that it's been made quite apparent to us.
Alderman James, I think it'd be wrong to make deductions about how the planning staff interpret things, if you could simply confine yourself to your opinion.
Yeah, well, it's my opinion, it's my opinion, but at the same time, now, at the same time, Mr Mayor, at the same time, I believe that the discretion rests with us, and we can, in fact, drill down into those performance criteria and ascertain as to whether or not a section of the veranda that is overshadowed for, you know, the specified time of three hours of winter solace, is in fact been able to be, the performance criteria can say, well, that part of the veranda is is going to be in darkness, whereas another part of the veranda or a section of the veranda will actually be in in the sunlight and meet the three hours requirement. So, look, there is that wriggle room, and I'm hoping that the new council will address this, or seek to talk to the to the minister in relation to how we can make the difference to award this privacy overshadowing outside the building envelope to people who have lived in a certain dwelling and been able to enjoy that dwelling, but due to the course of time and the interpretation of the planning scheme, they lose that, and I think we need to address this, and I hope that the new council does take some action, not only lead the way, but also be able to do it. I cannot support this, because I believe there's wriggle room.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I absolutely have to respond to that. Early in this contribution, Alderman James said that that the acceptable solutions apply some kind of, you know, or that implies some kind of benchmark performance criteria. We know clearly that they do not, because that was the principle that was established by the Henry Design Decision, which I remember in a debate about another application, we all agreed that the principles behind the Henry Design Decision were correct, that is that you, if it doesn't apply with the performance criteria, with the acceptable solution, sorry, you don't use that as a benchmark, the performance criteria stand alone. Now, yes, some of them can be open to fairly wide interpretation, I don't believe they can be interpreted as widely as Alderman James implies, because they have been subject to quite a great deal of interpretation through various tribunal cases and decisions. So we do know how we do know how to interpret them, but we must interpret them, we must apply them. We cannot go back to this, you know, as we saw in the, if you've seen the film The Castle, the vi argument, and say, oh, it just affects the general amenity. The officer's put a lot of work into these reports and to assessing these developments accordance with the performance criteria, and if we're going to disagree with their decision, if we're going to put forward an alternative decision... And if we're going to, um, disagree with their decision, if we're going to, um, put forward an alternative decision, then it's incumbent on us to actually explain in terms of the performance criteria why their recommendation is wrong and why can we interpret it another way. We must identify which criteria and exactly why it doesn't comply. It's not an unfair discretion. Okay? And that's been, that's been well established through tribunal decisions. We don't have an unfair discretion. If we have a discretion, but implying that discretion, we must apply the planning scheme. Um, and really, if, if we're, if we're going to come in here and argue that a development is not compliant with the standard, go into the performance criteria where it's not complying, and explain why it doesn't meet the scheme.
I think generally, the fact that we are, we have, the, the scheme has actually reduced the size of blocks on which you can do these developments. Um, we'll see this, these issues naturally arise because of, of less space surrounding developments. Um, the fact that there is privacy screens, which is a common condition that is put on these developments, addresses those issues, um, provides the, the solution for that. Um, and that's the, the quandary that we might find ourselves in sometimes because of the fact that the overall block size has been reduced. It's going to lead more and more to this situation arising. But in changing times, there is a need to, to increase density in our suburbs because of the fact of the pressure of, um, increasing populations and the stress and, and pressure put on infrastructures. So it is something that is being addressed by, um, the, um, performance criteria, and this seems to comply.
I might just tangentially respond to what the previous speaker has said. Um, and I think when we discuss density, then the next term of council should be perhaps looking at this issue in greater detail. What, what seems to be happening is, um, low caliber density occurring where, uh, we're finding in sort of the middle ring suburbs that three twenty-five is now the new game in town. So we see a villa that's built within the specs, uh, maybe not in the spirit, but certainly within the rules and away it goes. Uh, there is a place for density, but I, I don't know that what we currently have now where the density is occurring there is the smart way forward. If we, you know, we should probably be looking smarter at, um, actually higher density right around, um, service hubs, because we're going to have more single, uh, households, and within those households, they'll have needs around, um, you know, universal bison, and that can be done smartly in that, that context. So, um, I, I just make that as a, as a comment. Um, I make no comment on a preference for this because we're a planning authority, we're without taste. Um, so, uh, I believe that it complies, uh, and that's the situation I'll be following with my voting.
The motion for approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? Carried. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. It's nothing under customer service, asset management, financial management, general manager.
Mr Mayor, I'm delighted to be able to table the, uh, the, um, twenty eighteen, uh, financial statements and the, uh, unqualified audit report in respect of those statements. We did receive it, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and the Act requires that I table it at the first ordinary meeting of council following that, so certainly I'm, I'm delighted to be able to have another set of, uh, of, um, of, um, uh, accounts that have been passed as true and correct and without any qualification by the auditor. Mr Mayor, if I can publicly pass on my thanks to Mimi No Finance team for, for the effort that's gone into it. I know it's been a, uh, a, a fairly lengthy exercise in terms of transitioning a number of aspects, one from, uh, into our new financial systems, this is the first set of accounts under our new financial system. Uh, it's the first set of accounts following the, the recompilation, if I can call it that, of our asset register. And I know there's many hundreds of hours of staff time above and beyond going into this, so if I can just publicly acknowledge it, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Uh, thank you, and I am aware that, um, uh, some of the large councils in the state have run foul of the new order, the general zealous approach to a number of different approaches, for example, non-systems, and, um, the difficulties that we had, uh, with getting copying recognised. Um, it's been a long, difficult process, and it's resulted in the audit coming in as late as it has. But with the leave of the meeting, uh, I'd like for the general, uh, manager's comments in regard to the staff to be recognised. Any problem there? Thank you.
Thanks, General Manager.
Uh, item twelve, Alderman's questions time, there's no matter on notice, questions without notice. Alderman James?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Here, um, my question through you to the general manager, have, uh, Cambroid Petrochemicals paid council the two point four four million for Kangaroo Bay Wharf site? If so, when? If not, when considering the development has commenced? That's the first part of the question.
Uh, through, Mr Mayor, yeah, we transacted the sale of the land with Sham Broad a, a long time ago. I think it was probably nearly twelve months ago, I'm not sure now, I mean, I'd have to the exact date, but yes, we were paid and it's all done and dusted.
Oh, has the company paid the seven hundred and thirty thousand for the car parking provisions not being provided with the development? If not, when? And what sites are being considered and measures taken by council to provide new car parking to help alleviate the already severe shortage in BelRee?
Um, there's two parts to that question. The first part in relation to Sham Broad is that they, at this stage, haven't, but under the planning permit, though, I think it's required from, I don't know if it's prior to the commencement of use or I can't remember the exact words, but they're, they're not due to have paid it as yet, I'm confident of that, and it will be paid in due course, I would understand. In terms of what the council's doing, um, council has had a number of discussions around possible locations for future car parks within the BelRee area to try and provide some additional car parking. Um, I'm not in, probably in a position to outline specific sites at this time, but certainly as a, as a, as an interim measure, we have, uh, provided some, uh, parking capacity on, I think it's lot four of the subdivision, uh, the one at the rear, and it's likely that, uh, that, um, any future development of that site would also possibly provide for additional council car parking spaces and community car parking spaces in some form.
And the second question is in relation to what legal action is available to Hunter should council decide to call for expressions of interest to restart the process on the Rosney Hill proposal?
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, I have no idea what legal options are open to Hunter, that's up to them to pursue their own legal advice.
Alderman Walker? Alderman Thelly? Alderman McFarlane?
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, to, uh, Ross Lovell. Could we have some feedback from the process with the state government on the review of residential zone standards that we requested? I know it was accepted by the minister, but I'd like to know where that process is up to and when we can get feedback.
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, we'd have to pursue that with the, I'm just, I'm getting signals from Ross. We'll have to pursue that through the department. I know we've written to the minister, and I think from memory, Elgat also have taken it up with the minister, but I'm not sure that we've got a timeframe or any indication of how or when that's going to occur at this stage. We'll, we'll chase that up if we can note that, please.
Yeah. The, the second question was in relation to another motion, which just was to Legatt. So when will Legatt consider council's motion to request the extension of consultation timeframes with the larger commercial developments?
Um, look, we've written to Legatt, I'm aware of that, I haven't got a response back yet. Um, it could appear at the general meeting coming up in November. I'm not sure about that yet. I can, I can confirm.
General meeting's December.
December, sorry, yeah. So we, we will, uh, certainly let you know. Alderman Chong? Alderman here? Alderman Dirst? Alderman Piers? Alderman Von Berta?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In relation to the public places bylaw motion that was put by Alderman James and seconded by Alderman Chong and approved by all the Aldermen present on the sixteenth of April this year, could the general manager advise whether a person using a drone on a regular basis at the same public venue will only need to obtain one permit or a permit on each occasion?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, the, uh, the, such an applicant would only require one permit for, for multiple use in terms of the same venue and the same conditions would apply, so we would expect that only one permit would be, one initial permit would be required.
That brings us to the closed, uh, meeting, uh, the end of the open meeting. Um, for those that aren't familiar with the process, unlike, uh, the state and federal government, we don't have a cabinet as such, so we have to deal with confidential items in a closed session. So at this stage, we need to close the meetings in the public. Thank you for your attendance, it's much appreciated.
You have a motion to go into?
Yeah, I will. Okay, moved Alderman Campbell, seconded Alderman Piers, I think, uh, procedural motion, all those in favour? Against? That's carried.